Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Time for our second regular meeting of this month. At this time, Mr. Schultz will give the invocation and Mr. Hawke will lead us in the pledge. If you would stand, please stand. On your heads. Lord, thank you for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens and the city of Washington Courthouse. Keep us all safe and in good health. And thank you for being there and thank you for listening to us. Thank you for everything. And in your name, Lord, amen.
Please join me in making the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, can I?
Blair.
Here.
Crispin.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have three sets of minutes to approve. The first is from the regular meeting on June fourteenth. I didn't see anything there, but did anybody else that I missed? If not, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from six fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next, we have the special meeting from the next day, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Anyone want to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written here from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
I missed one. Oh. Yes.
Okay. Yes, you're good. Johnson.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And finally, the special meeting from June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Q. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Thank you. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
There's a shock. Okay. Reports of council committee service, safety, and recreation. Mr. Hawke, you're up to bat.
The service, safety, and recreation committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, June fourteenth at six P M. Ted Hawke resided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Crispin, council member, Ms. Kendra Mandis, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Matt Pfeifer, police lieutenant, Mr. Ron Sockman, service director, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a general report by the Washington Police Department. The committee recommended that four new officers be hired to fulfill open positions. Number two, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Fire Department. Number three, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Service Department. The committee noted that E M, H, and T engineering were in the process of applying for a water plant grant application. Number four, the committee benefited from a review of the twenty twenty-five urban paving plan. Urban paving planning. Number five, the administration advised the committee that the parks were in good shape, but noted concerns regarding the issue of the splash pad and fitness equipment. Number six, the committee benefited from an update regarding the bike trail. Administration noted that the walkthrough of the Patterson property would be completed by the service director and E M, H, and T engineering on June twenty-second. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawke, chairperson, service, safety, and recreation committee, Mr. Joe Denon, recording secretary.
Does anybody have any questions?
The only thing is number six, Mr. Sean Remington also joined them on that walkthrough. And I think, Mr. Hawke, not to criticize, but number five, it was the misuse of the splash pad. You say, I think, issue. Yeah. Misuse. That'd be confusing. People didn't understand how you did some damage. No, that's fine. There had been damage there.
Is it still being misused, Mr. Denon?
Yeah, we've had a pretty decent run lately. We have developed, and this periodically happens, a graffiti problem in town. And you'll go through a period of time where you have an issue with that, and then we'll go through a nice long stretch where it's not.
Any other questions? Someone want to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, you are up to bat.
Thank you. You'll see preliminary paving work on Court Street commencing on July the fifth. Would like to note, Fire in the Sky and the many volunteers that make the fireworks display in Washington Courthouse possible. And any support that any of us are able to give to that is sincerely appreciated by the many volunteers that put in a lot of time, effort, and passion into the fireworks display, and that really makes that possible every year. Would like to thank the police department for their recent work with difficult situations. They have performed in the recent past excellently, as well has the fire department. Street, the paving effort requires a huge amount of effort with the contractor in terms of traffic control and so forth. So it's a lot of work for street. It's not something that is just contracted out, even though we don't have the equipment to do it on our own. But it's a huge amount of work, and the street employees have done an excellent job. And in particular, as he always does with paving, Pete Harpary has been enormously dedicated. Don't want to leave out, because sometimes, once we get past certain holidays, we forget about them. We tend to up here. The folks at the cemetery have been working very hard this year and have been enormously pleased. The asbestos survey for the old nursing home on Rawling Street has been recently committed, or completed. The land bank contracted to have that done, and this would be the first step in heading in the direction of demolition of that structure. Good news is that they did not find any friable asbestos, which means that there's not going to have to be any particular asbestos abatement with the property before you tear it down. Now, the roof tiles and floor tiles are assumed to have asbestos in them, but that is not considered to be an airborne risk, so you'll be able to dispose of those with the regular demolition debris. As mentioned in the report, we have hired Lane Lidle and Cedric Pettiford and Marcus Segelder for the police department, and then we would engage Mr. Picard after the first of the year. Also, earlier in the day, and I just wanted to point out again how enormously proud I am, Morgan Williams, the young lady that's gone to work at the water plant, already has passed the test for her water one license, and we're just thrilled about that. But again, please remember Fire in the Sky. It's a lovely event on the third, and any support that you can put towards that, that would be deeply appreciated. And would like to specifically thank Butch Williamson of the Fire Department for his dedicated service of Fire in the Sky. That's all about it.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Denon. Director of Finance, Mrs. Collins, what have you got this evening? For those who don't know, we have a finance committee meeting before this, so we've heard most of our reports, so you're telling everybody else.
Right. Well, we continue to have a good, strong cash position. Right now, in the general fund, we have one point nine million dollars. In our investments in May, we had a gain of about three thousand dollars per month. We have investments in U S Bank securities and Fifth Third Securities. And then we also have an account with Star Ohio. We had a pretty good gain there of sixteen thousand dollars. And then the only other thing I wanted to remind people about is that Washington Courthouse is now on the Ohio checkbook. So I, we have April, May out there. At the beginning of July, I'll submit June for those to be posted. And if anyone wants to go there and look, the website is checkbook.ohio.gov.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Mr. Pitstick.
Mr. Chairman, I have my report tomorrow.
You haven't cut any grass.
Oh, we've cut all kinds of things. Took up all kinds of trash.
I'm sure that's true. The grass slowed down for a little while, but mine is back at it again, so. Okay. I think because I sit next to Mr. Schultz, I'm going to make this statement. He's rubbing off on me. I would like to call Mrs. Call to the stand.
Call Mrs. Call.
She wants to speak. You know the routine, Mrs. Call. Tell us your name and your address.
Sure. I am Sylvia Call, and I'm at three twenty-seven North Main. I have an important update for you guys that Ms. Josephine wanted me to share, but she didn't want to share it herself. We have four eggs. I mean, we've eaten them all at this point, but so exciting, right? Yes. So that's good stuff. And then I just have a quick update about curbside recycling. So I reached out again to Erica Tucker, and she wanted somebody from Rumkey to be able to be here. So they're going to be attending on the July twelfth meeting, but they're going to come to the service, safety, and recreation portion to just talk to you guys. She did address some of the questions that you guys had, so I do have that information. You guys had asked about alternate bid options, so different companies who might be able to provide that. She said, unfortunately, no. I told her that it was kind of teased that she might be getting sponsored by Rumkey and paid by Rumkey, and she said, no, I kind of wish, but no. She said that the Republic Trash Company is an option in our area, but they only cover commercial services for recycling. And then she said waste management in the past hasn't done it. She tried to call them three separate times on three separate days and just didn't have any luck getting a response. So she's assuming it's probably still a no. But she said she'll keep working on it, but typically in the past, it's been no. Another question that you guys had posed was, does everyone have to participate? Because I think in the past, it had been set up that way, that everybody or nobody. She said that's not the case with Rumkey, but she said she wants them to be able to speak to the number of people that would have to be able to participate to qualify our communities. I think they do need to hit a certain number, and she said that's kind of their ballgame, not hers. And then the other question was talking about the payment setup and how that would be handled if it was like a lump sum payment out of a levy. I, I think, and, you know, it's not my call, even though I am a call. You know, right, Mr. Schultz, right?
He's rubbing off on everybody.
Sorry. You guys had mentioned the possibility of doing like a levy to pay for it, but then we get into that ballgame of then everybody's paying for it. She had said, Erica had said that it was her understanding that they have in the past done with cities where they just pay, like, individuals pay it on their utility bill. It's just added in as an extra if that family, household chooses. And then the city then forwards to Rumkey. And I said, well, it was mentioned that that was kind of like a pittance and kind of piecemeal. And she said, I think that's how they do it in other places, but again, we'll get them there. And then you guys can ask them all those questions and get some more clarification on what it looks like. So that's really all of the updates I have, unless you guys have more questions or questions about the questions.
Who ate the eggs?
Can you recall who ate the eggs?
That's an important question, right? She definitely ate most of the eggs.
Okay. That's great.
Yes, they were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to having them in.
Yes, sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Sean, I'm trying to think of some cute way to say come up today, but I can't, so. You're next on the list.
Just follow the trail right up to the movie.
You have an axer. Sean Remington, thirty-eight fifty-seven, U S trial sixty-two. I came to give an update or a recap of where this started at, where we're at, where we're hoping to be going. It's kind of interesting. I brought my daughter today for birthday, thirteen. And this journey started with an incident that could have happened with her riding bikes. And I was thinking back, she was ten, so this has been three years now. And I've been lobbying counsel for, I started with the Parks Department, excuse me. So we worked on it with them for a year. And, but it dawned on me, there was a lot of people before me, Tri-County Trail Group, the city, be with the railroad. This is, this is way before me. But what we've identified was, in the town, there was a public safety issue with getting around the railroad, connecting. We have a trail system that goes from the water plant, really the cemetery, all the way to Kroger's. And then we have this really nice park with the splash pad, this workout area, these new ponds. And since my new shop is now right down Temple Street, I have a day-to-day view of people playing Frogger. There's also another thing I've observed. There's a lot of people that don't have cars that come from Kroger's pulling wagons with their groceries. So all the time, I watch people coming across these tracks, either with a toddler in the car, in the wagon, or pulling groceries. And so it, for me, it just really, in the near term, was a public safety issue. And like I said, it's been, August will be a year that we've been coming, me and Rochelle. I met through the Tri-County Trail, Triangle, excuse me, Triangle Trail. And we haven't missed one meeting in, I think, like, ten months, which is hard to do. But I tell people, talk to Sylvia here about things in the town, is these things take time. And the wheels of government are slow, because they're slow because it's complex. They're very complex. There's only so much money. If you do something good for one group, it may be a problem for another group. There's a lot of different interests, so. But this is democracy at work, and we're just going to keep coming and trying to work in that. But we've been working with Joe and other members, and I think we have a plan for the, for in-town. And if this, going from Crispin Park with the splash pad, from Lakeview, coming through the Patterson property, eventually, you know, this year, eventually if we can get to popping out in front of Cherry Hill School on Oakland, and then, you know, getting some time next year, the following year. Looks like we might be connecting Kroger's, connecting through West Market, is that the road? And giving the Fayette County Parks District an opportunity to connect Yeoman Road. We have a trail system on Yeoman to come in there. But, so that's the local picture in the public safety for this community. But as we all know, town is growing, and Ohio is growing with Intel, Washington Courthouse, Fayette County with Honda L G. And, you know, I've talked to Chelsea and stuff for this for a while, and one thing is, what I've heard back from her and others is amenities. A lot of people are coming from bigger cities. They're used to having a lot of amenities. And, you know, money can, tax dollars can only go so far, but at this time in history, we have a lot of mental health. Bang for buck, parks are the best return on investment for mental health and things in the community. I think when people spend more time in the community, they start to care more about the community. They care more about trash. They care more about graffiti. They care more about, you know, looking out for each other's properties when they make connections. So it's, it's more than just my own personal thing about experience I have with my daughter. It's the feedback I've gotten from this town in this year journey, almost three years journey, is that back. But ultimately, in the big ultimate picture, with the commissioners coming in from seventy-one, from the edge of Fayette County, towards now they're stopping at Okta, planning going to Millageville. For anyone who's watching YouTube and doesn't know this, the city tried to get past the railroad to, towards Y M C A or onto Yeoman Road, and the railroad would not allow it. So that was really a huge hurdle from leaving town. But, but if we could connect to Xenia by connecting that, we have an opportunity to advertise to people of Cincinnati, come take a weekend warrior bike trip to Chilla Coffee, and courthouse is your pit stop. In a time of Amazon, when people can buy all the retail they want online, you have to make these downtown shops, it's going to take more than just the local. You have to have people coming in. And we don't have Rolling Mountains in the background, but we do have is all roads lead to Washington Courthouse. So we're centrally located, and so we really feel like we can make an experience-based economy by having, just having people passing through and saying, hey, there's this nice restaurant. There's a band playing. There's an Airbnb in this old downtown building. There's free yoga in the park tomorrow, and, you know, this is a pretty charming town. They shop, they spend money, they move on to Chilla Coffee, and then maybe we can capture them again on the way back. And that's our ultimate plan for some of the local economic driving for this town. So that's the vision that we've been working on, and thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
And you've got a teenager now. Happy birthday.
Mr. Lynch, one issue that came up with Sean the other day, when I talked to him early in the week. And it's relatively easy to do. We do have to pass legislation. If somebody wanted to donate private money to trail efforts, that we set up a fund exactly like we did for the Dog Park, that's easy. And in that case, if somebody donated for trails, the money would go in the trail fund, and that's the only thing we'd spend it on. But that's easy to do. It's easy for us to deal with. So, then I neglected to bring that up earlier. I'd forgotten about that.
Sounds like a good idea.
Work for the Dog Park, you know, that was a good thing.
Who would take care of that, setting up that fund? How would they?
You folks pass legislation.
Okay.
And then it's just a simple pay-in. You know, if somebody donated twenty dollars, the pay-in just gets coded for that, that fund number. And off you go, and it's easy.
Sounds like a plan. I mean, we'd have to work out the details, where they pay it here at the city building or send it in.
Dog Park, they just, they either walked in, dropped it off, or they mailed it in, and it was easy.
To the city?
Yeah.
Okay, and it goes to the trail?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I think that sounds like a terrific idea. Yep.
Okay.
Work on that.
Thank you. We brought it up in the economic development, Sean. I know we jumped on there, because Chelsea was talking about how much Honda L G likes things like trails, and that's how it came up earlier, actually. You're exactly right what you said. It is appealing to companies coming in and looking at the area. All right. Any other comments about that? We'll move into legislation. We have legislation previously introduced. We have one. And that is Resolution Number R twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, second reading.
I'd like to put Resolution Number R twenty-six, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution Number R twenty-six dash two thousand twenty-three, a resolution establishing a cooperative relationship between the City of Washington Courthouse and the Union Township trustees concerning the annexation of the Bryant property.
Who for adoption?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have no new legislation. Rather unusual. Okay, I don't know. Mr. Schultz, what have you got for miscellaneous tonight?
I don't have much, but I just drove around town today and saw the smoke-filled look in the city. It did look a little smoky at times, a little cloudy, and it was a little difficult to breathe, I think. I mean, when have we ever had a very bad air quality day in Washington Courthouse? I, I don't remember the last time we ever had that. The only time we ever, I could ever think of having a bad air day, you think of just following Ted around after he left White Castle or something, you know? But that's the worst I can think of. But the air quality, we've never had that before. So, but that's all I got, you know? I hope everybody can breathe okay.
We have children present. Okay. Do you want to top that?
Completely opposite. Fayette County Fairs in just a few weeks, and there's lots of kiddos that are involved. And they're four age projects, and a lot of time and effort go into that. And I know that it affects businesses in town, but I would love to see all your faces out there at some point, supporting the kiddos, supporting the sales, supporting the rides, and the adults who submit their projects and photography and, you know, gardening. So it's just, I don't know. I wouldn't trade it for the world. You know, it's one of those small-town things that you don't get everywhere. So I just encourage everyone to go and support those who have really put a lot of effort in. So a couple of my good friends are highly involved in the fair and planning and getting the kids ready, and it's a lot of work, and they do it for free, so makes a big difference.
Very good. Mr. Johnson.
I'm very tempted to say that Mr. Schultz has said enough for everyone. But.
Amen, Mr. Johnson.
But I do want to mention, July fourth is one of my favorite holidays. And just enjoy it responsibly. If you are going to shoot off some fireworks, don't blow off an arm or something. But besides that, I think a lot of grilling out and hamburgers and maybe some brats and beer and everything else and family, all good things. So enjoy it responsibly.
Mr. Blair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was privileged this week to attend a birthday party with yourself and Mr. Hawke, honoring the oldest surviving World War Two veteran in Fayette County.
The only surviving, I think. World War Two veteran.
Anyway, Dale presented a city resolution to him, honoring him by naming, what was it, June twenty-second, as his day, special day. And what's interesting, I found out, was he's a hundred years old, he lives alone, and the lady that cares for him, takes him different places and so forth, is ninety-one. And she's the one that comes over and mows his yard. So perseverance, perseverance. And also, I wanted to thank Christina for all the work she was, has done to finally get the Ohio checkbook going. It's, it's very much. That's very much appreciated. And also, Mr. Remington, always liked his Cliff Notes version of Where the Trail Stands. So thank you all very much for your participation. That's all I have, sir.
Very good. Mr. Hawk?
Well, I've got an apology to make. I've been calling Mrs. Call the Chicken Lady, but I guess it would be better just to call her the Call Girl, I don't know.
You thought mine was bad.
I have a lot of questions.
I take that.
He's rubbing off on him.
That's always God.
We'll have something else, please.
I'm with Caleb on the 4th of July, I think that's a great thing, and I hope you all enjoy it and remember why it is there. That's all.
I told you Schultz is rubbing off. Mr. Christman?
Ted, what you told Mrs. McCall, or Mrs. Call, not McCall, is that a foot in your mouth? I, I pray every day that the Lord had helped me with my speech and temptation is overwhelming, I, I couldn't... Be sure not to say... Sorry, I apologize. Yeah, but just be sure not to say something about don't strike me dead or something.
You're sitting right beside him, Jim.
Yeah, too close. Anyway, thank everybody for coming, thanks for the two speakers we had up there. Happy 13th birthday.
And Sean's birthday is the 4th of July.
Really? So I'll tell you what, Sean, we'll all celebrate your birthday.
He's a fired frankfurter.
That's interesting.
You know, and I, I was, I was concerned that I was going to embarrass her. It turned out my mom.
She turned you embarrassed. Well, we will all celebrate your birthday. We even shut the banks down in the city.
Sean, there's a lot of good people born in July.
Yeah, a lot of people are.
And you're three days over than me. Well, plus, plus maybe a couple of years. That's all I have. Thanks for coming, folks. Thank you too.
I lost control.
He needs a bit of gavel and hat to control his crowd. The one up here, not you guys.
Joe was gone last week on vacation, which I'm glad about, he needs a vacation to get away from all the stuff that goes on in this city, but anyway. So I'd ask Jim, this Jim, to go with me, it was George Carrigan's birthday, and Ted was there too, to help me present his proclamation of the day. He is, and even the, the BFW didn't know that they had a World War II vet in Fayette County still remaining until they found out that they did, and he was 100, like Jim said, and he got a proclamation from the county and from Senator Vance, and it was very nice. Janet Bick is the lady who's in her 90s and takes care of him. And she is something else too. But anyway, it was a very neat occasion, and somebody had had made up for him one of the things we have hanging on the poles in town, the veterans' things, that was very nice. But he is living on his own, and he has some nice neighbors to help him, to help him, but he was a very neat gentleman, and it was great to honor him, and I'm glad we did that, Joe, to tell you, because you weren't there, but it was really nice. It's, it's what it should be about, and it was nice to honor him. Okay, I can't top White Castles and all the other stuff that's going on today, so we need an adjournment motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
The two Jims, good. And roll call.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned at basically 8:05.
Yes.